Welcome everyone who's come out to the meeting tonight. We've got a house full and I want to welcome all those that are watching on G-10 television. To begin the meeting tonight, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And this pledge is going to be led, and I'm going to ask them to come up now. First off, I've got Grant Peterson from Troop 946, the Boy Scouts of America. And he's working on his citizenship badge and his communication badge. And Grant, come on up front here. Ron, if you'd help him out. Also helping us with the pledge tonight, I have several members of Chapter Five of Rolling Thunder, our local chapter of Rolling Thunder here with President Joe Four. And I would ask them also to come up. And we'll have our men in uniform tonight give the pledge. How's that? We'll let them come up front and then we'll stand. Please remain standing for the invocation, Mr. Carter.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause again this evening to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this day, for your blessings upon us individually, and for your blessings upon us collectively as the city of Jacksonville. Tonight, we give thanks for the life and the service of Marty Goldman, for his service to our country and the United States Navy, and his service to our city as a member of our Board of Adjustment. We mourn his loss and pray for his wife Brenda and for their children, comfort them in this time of sorrow. We pray for our military persons who are serving us here and around the world, for their safety and for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them in their deliberations. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Please be seated. Good job today. All right, council, we have a copy of the agenda at your places that you received beforehand. We're going to add this USDA Emergency Watershed Protection Program grant. And this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Phillips, I would ask that we add an agenda item to appoint or have a discussion about appointments for the working group for recreation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have several presentations to make tonight, and I'm going to come around front and we're going to do these. This is always my favorite part of a meeting, when we can recognize people for doing special things and special people in our community. So, the first one tonight, I'm going to ask Chief Mike Yanero, our Director of Public Safety, and Jacksonville Police Officer Scott Bullock to join me up front.
Thank you, Alan.
Do you have anybody you wish to bring with you? Might be a good idea.
Whether she wants to come or not.
Hey, Scott. Stand right over here. May I? How you doing? Good to see you. On May 1st, 2019, Jacksonville Public Safety responded to an emergency medical call. Officer Scott Bullock was first to arrive at the scene. Officer Bullock assessed the female patient. She was not conscious, did not have a pulse, and was not breathing. He began CPR, and after two cycles, the patient began breathing again. Officer Bullock continued medical care until the arrival of the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services and Onslow County EMS. The patient was transported to Onslow Memorial Hospital for further care and medical assistance. Jacksonville Police Department supervisors were advised by the victim's family that without the quick response and action by Officer Bullock, the woman would have lost her life. The immediate response and heroic efforts by Officer Scott Bullock resulted in preventing a tragedy and are very worthy of the Life Saving Award. And I would like to present this to you, Scott. Thank you so much for what you do out there every day. That's every day. For the next presentation tonight, I'd like to ask Avery Eleanor and her family to come up front and join me. Oh, come on, folks, let's go. Come on. You stand right over here with me. How's that? Okay? I like your outfit. It's very festive and fall-like. Isn't she beautiful? The United Way of Onslow County recently held a dedication ceremony for the CHU, Children Healthy Eating on the Weekends House. This is a dedicated collection and packing food site. The food is packed and goes to local schools to be distributed to the children in the program. Avery, Avery Eleanor, is a six-year-old first grader from Infant Prague Elementary School. And she, let me tell you about this child right here. I happened to be there that day because it was the rededication of the CHU House. And I'll pick up reading this again in a minute, but I was just amazed what I saw there. Avery, again, like I said, a six-year-old first grader from Infant Prague Elementary School, started a lemonade stand to raise funds for the CHU program. And the CHU program, let me go aside there for a minute. The CHU program feeds a lot of kids on weekends that otherwise would probably not have anything to eat whatsoever outside the school setting. Avery originally wanted to earn money to buy a puppy, which her mother told her she could not have.
Wisely.
Moms know best there. When the puppy did not work out, she decided to buy a dollhouse. Dollhouses are nice. But once she heard about the CHU House, she knew she wanted to help other children. Oh, boy. That's what you do. She decided to donate any money she made to CHU. When Avery's grandmother heard about her wanting to help others, she told Avery she would match whatever amount Avery was able to raise. Got her, didn't you? Avery's mom said Avery has always been a kind-hearted child who loves dance classes, music, and crafts. We are so proud to have such an outstanding young citizen in our community, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, say thank you to Avery, and her family for bringing up such a wonderful child here who cares so much about other people. I'm pleased to present her with the mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award and a pin. And I wish to say congratulations again. Outstanding citizen. Not everybody gets one of those. Only outstanding people. All right, Mom, remind me, wasn't it somewhere around the amount of $700 that she contributed to CHU? I was just amazed with this little girl here. She just made my day that day. And I got you a plaque. I want you to, maybe Mom will let you hang that up in the house somewhere because really is absolutely worthy of your recognition or recognition. Avery, you're a wonderful person. At six years old, you're amazing. Thank you so much. Take a picture of the plaque. Let's take it. I'm not taking away from you. I want a souvenir, okay? Just like that. I want a copy of this, okay? Joe Four, he's the president of the local chapter of Rolling Thunder, Chapter Number Five. If Joe would join me up front here, did you want to bring any of your mates forward? Or, come on, let's go. Come on. Those that ride together, stand together in the council meeting. Hey, Joe. The Veterans Day National Committee recognizes select Veterans Day observances throughout the country that represent fitting tributes to America's heroes and that serve as models for other communities to follow in planning their own observances. The National Committee has designated the city of Jacksonville as an official regional site for Veterans Day observances for the ninth year in a row. Jacksonville is one of 49 communities in 28 states that have received this honor and is one of only three designated sites in North Carolina. The Rolling Thunder submits the application for this honor each year and also organizes the annual Veterans Day Parade, which is scheduled for Saturday, November 9th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And I encourage everyone that's within earshot of what I'm saying here, please come out to the Veterans Parade. It's really a wonderful parade, and it's grown every year. Just, you know, it's really a nice parade. Y'all do a great job of organizing this. And it's not easy to put on a parade, is it? It's more than just getting in fancy cars and riding around in. Anyway, thank you so much.
Sir, on behalf of Rolling Thunder NC-5, we present this to the city of Jacksonville.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
You guys do so much. Would you mind telling everybody a little bit about the organization and what y'all do? I know I caught you unprepared, well, you know, you're all prepared.
Now I have to talk. Ladies and gentlemen, Rolling Thunder Incorporated's main function is to educate the public about the POW and MIA issues, letting you know that there are still POWs and MIA's missing around the world. And we are also dedicated to supporting veterans and veterans organizations and those veterans that are in need. Again, we do encourage you, please, to come out to Veterans Day Parade. It's all about our veterans, our active-duty members, and their family members that support them.
Thank you, gentlemen. I look forward to riding in the parade.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, this time, we're going to do a presentation, and this is from Duke Progress Energy, and it's a Foundation Storm Resiliency Grant. Yes, we were resilient during the storm. And Chief Yanero is going to join me up front, our Public Safety Director. And this is the lovely Millie Chalk from Duke Energy, who's going to present us with that. We're not going to be able to take that to the drive-through.
No, sir.
Won't fit.
But I sent you a good check.
All right. The city of Jacksonville is receiving a $10,000 storm resiliency grant from the Duke Energy Foundation. The funds will be utilized to replace specialized outerwear used by Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services Swift Water Rescue Unit, and to improve digital technology within the Emergency Operations Center located at the Center for Public Safety. During Hurricane Florence, first responders from the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services responded to over 200 water rescues in the city. The grant funding will allow Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services to obtain specialized dry suits constructed of Gore-Tex to keep them dry and maintain their body temperature dependent upon the weather conditions during the water rescue events. In addition, the equipment upgrade will improve remote sensing and real-time information that provides reliable resources for city and community leaders to make life-saving decisions for the protection of our citizens during emergency events. The city of Jacksonville is one of 65 North Carolina agencies selected to receive a total of $1.1 million from the Duke Energy Foundation to enhance storm readiness, response capabilities for future weather events with advanced preparation and planning. Duke Energy selected awardees based on the severity of storm impacts during severe weather incidents in recent years with a concentration on communities that serve diverse populations. And Millie, Chief, jump in here.
Thank you so much, and I thank Duke Energy for this generous donation.
Mayor, if we could, I'd also like to ask representatives of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services who are here if y'all would come forward and accept this check. Amy and Sean.
Here's your check. Use it wisely. Sounds like you really got some good equipment that they want to put out there. It's very necessary in these events. Millie, thank you so much.
It's our pleasure.
We thank Duke Energy for always being such a great corporate citizen and working so well with our community. Did you want some?
Duke Energy does appreciate the partnership with the city of Jacksonville. We work on a lot of things together, and this is just one small token of that appreciation, but of the good work that the city of Jacksonville does in protection of citizens and ensuring that we are safe and as resilient as possible. And I think we've shown that we are. So, thank y'all.
One other comment. Millie talked about the partnership. As you know, the city is building a marina down on the waterfront. I guess that's a logical place to build a marina. But Duke also gave us a $100,000 grant a year and a half ago to assist in that construction. So, Millie, on behalf of the city, thank you and do your power.
Thank you.
Yeah, give her a Sharpey and let her endorse it.
Thank you, Millie. Thank you very much. Gail, you actually do need to come up and bring your crew with you, all those that work in the finance department that do such a great job for the city of Jacksonville. The city recently received notification that the city of Jacksonville and its finance department have been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the highest level of recognition given in the area of governmental accounting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our local government and finance department. This is the 28th consecutive year that the city of Jacksonville and its finance department has received this recognition. The city would like to recognize the hard work and dedication of our finance department for this outstanding achievement. And this is how many years in a row? 28. 28 years. Wow. That's a lot of I-dotting and T-crossing it.
Mayor, while they're taking pictures, let me add a couple of comments. As citizens, the most important thing that you should want from your city government is to make sure that the taxes that you pay are correctly accounted for. This award, while it has been won 28 years, is not just an award that because you submitted an application, you got the award. What this requires is dedicated accuracy. It requires documentation that all of the funds of the city have been correctly expended. The folks that stand in front of you today represent accuracy. They represent dedication to you as citizens. So, many times, we have life safety awards, which are important. But as a taxpayer, I'm going to tell you that there is no award more important to you as a taxpayer than to know that this award is given because of the accuracy and dedication they have on how your tax money is spent. I commend you.
Okay, we've reached our first section of public comment for the evening. No one signed a sheet? Is there anyone present wishes to speak at public comment? If so, please raise your hand. I don't see anybody. Council, we're going to have adoption of the minutes and the consent items, and the minutes are from a September 17th, 2019 regular workshop meeting. Do I get a motion?
Move of approval? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, six to five, I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let's go ahead and take a few minutes break. I know a lot of people have come just for the presentations tonight. I know that most of you probably don't want to stay for the business end of this deal here tonight. So, I'm going to give you this opportunity to take your time and run.
Two members.
Where's Al?
Bob, did you send him here?
Well, it is me and...
Yeah, we got it.
I got it.
No, that's clean. And basically, we're going to base it...
Okay, we're going to go ahead and resume the meeting here. We're going to go to agenda item number six this evening, and it's a map amendment, a rezoning for Arnold Road, Coleman Drive, Carver Drive, Washington Drive, Hunter Drive, Eva Street, Country Club Road, and Commerce Road. And Jeremy Smith, our senior planner, is going to be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Mayor was correct. This is a proposed staff-initiated rezoning covering a large area, predominantly Arnold Road, Coleman Drive, Carver Drive, Washington Drive, Hunter Drive, Eva Street, Country Club Road, and Commerce Road. You'll notice the parcels and the area in question on the vicinity map before you on This is the aerial photography outline of the proposed rezoning area. And before you use the existing zoning, and I'm going to have a little bit of a history and the zoning to go over. So, the predominant zoning in this area currently is residential multifamily low-density. The gray to the north is industrial. A little over a year ago, the Planning and Inspections Department received an application for a duplex on Arnold Road. It was surprising to get that application because we hadn't really, we had never had one in this area. So, we investigated, looked, and lo and behold, the RMF LD zoning allows duplex as well as single-family housing. So, staff had no choice. It met standards. It met the requirements. We issued the permit, and it was constructed. Since that time, we had a number of calls from the neighborhood, some questions about it. And so we investigated the ordinance and how it happened, and here we're getting to a step on to prevent a duplex to be constructed in a single-family neighborhood. Before the UDO adopted this property, these properties were zoned RMF 5. And so when we consolidated to residential, to the UDO, it became RMF LD. Duplexes still allowed. And so what we are proposing for the predominant residential in this area is to change from residential multifamily low density to residential single-family 7. Through this, and this is the land use map that I will reiterate supports what we're doing. The yellow is the RSF 7. That's to change from RMF LD, residential multifamily low density, to residential single-family 7. While looking at this area for rezoning, we noted that the Sandy Run Apartments were also zoned residential multifamily low density, a district that apartments are not in allowed use. So we're proposing to rezone that property from RMF LD to RMF HD, which does allow apartments, making that a conforming use. There's property to the south of Sandy Run Apartments. The proposed industrial tract, which is also currently zoned RMF LD. It would be, that one is owned by Duke Progress, CPNL was the listing, but it's owned by Duke Progress now. We are proposing to rezone that to industrial. The property across the way from it on the south is currently zoned RMF LD, and we're owned by Anzalo Memorial Hospital. We are proposing to rezone that to office and institutional. And we'll move up north to Commerce Road. As with any rezoning, we look at the area. We look for inconsistencies, opportunities to correct zonings, to bring the zoning into compliance with the future land use plan, and just more what makes sense in that area. Trying to go back one more slide. The existing zoning, the industrial, directly behind the Home Depot and the Food Lion that are on Western Boulevard, we are proposing to take to corridor commercial. A downgrade in terms of intensity. There'll be 16 industrial uses that will no longer be allowed if that zoning moves forward, but there will be a wide variety of commercial uses allowed. Moving further down Commerce Road, where it intersects with Country Club Road, those two corner tracks and the two smaller tracks to the west are currently zoned RMF LD as well. We're proposing to have them zoned office and institutional. That should provide a good transitional area as you move from the residential single-family up Commerce Road to corridor commercial. The planning board heard this proposal at their August 12th meeting, and they, along with staff, have been, have recommended approval. In between those meetings, staff had attempted to have an open house. Then we were hit by the hurricane. So that postponed it, and we moved it, and we had a open house on September 29th. We had approximately 25 to 30 citizens from the area come, as well as Dr. Washington. We had a great discussion on what I have discussed with you tonight, on why we, why, why were we here? Why was this happening? And that summed up in one word, protection. We want to protect the single-family, the established single-family in this area. A duplex development is not the place in this area. These are long-term, longstanding, single-family homes, and we want to protect their rights and their interests by not allowing it, not to use, I don't mean that, an invasion of duplexes, because that's potentially what could happen with the RMF LD zoning. If, say, a number of homes were tore down, then you could have duplex. You could essentially double the density in this area, and that's not what the city wants. And I'm speaking with the homeowners out there, that's not what they want. And we also saw it as an opportunity, again, to get rid of the industrial zoning, which has a 16 very invasive uses that could prove negative impact onto the neighborhood there as well, recycling centers, large manufacturing. Whereas now with a proposed commercial zoning, there could be potential access to commercial services, retail establishments. And then with the office and institutional, you don't have that commercial pushing onto the neighborhood, but small offices, churches, potentially, as you move into the corridor commercial area. Again, the planning board and the city staff are recommending approval of this area-wide rezoning with findings of fact, A through J being found in the affirmative. Ryan King and myself are here as staff representatives to answer any questions that you may have. And I know there are a number of homeowners and property owners from the area who may not want to speak or just interested in what's going on. We've had a lot of calls. But again, this is a protection effort from the city to protect that single-family housing in the area. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, same question.
So Jeremy, are we going to zone that one duplex into nonconformity?
Yes, sir. That, that will be the, the one of two duplexes that are in that area that will now become nonconforming if we approve this.
What ramifications does that have for them?
It just means if it were to ever burn down, they could build back a single-family. But they would not be, if it was to be burned down or destroyed beyond 50% of its value, it could not be rebuilt as a duplex if we approve.
But if they wanted to add an electrical panel or something like that?
No, that would not, we would not, we would not hurt from general maintenance, repair, continued existing. It will continue on as a grandfathered use now if this rezoning is approved.
What about storm? What about a storm?
A storm, if, if it proved to damage it beyond 50%, that would fall under Article 7 of the UDO, our nonconformities. If you, if the value of the building is, if it's damaged beyond 50% of the value, then it loses its nonconforming status, and therefore has to come into compliance.
While you're at it, if you can just explain, I understand what you're doing here. But if we look to, or at least to our left here on the screen, when we look at these large area of RMF LD, where there's nothing but single-family homes, what is that, I'm trying to understand the approach.
The, the approach was to come small at first.
Okay, so eventually working throughout that area to protect single-family development.
Again, if you recall, we did a rezoning a few years ago at the corner of Western and Lejeune, where we corrected an industrial to corridor commercial. And this is just that ongoing series where we do pour into it, and we, we made sure we're doing the right thing in terms of rezoning. And I, I just spoke with Ryan earlier today. I said, our eyes will probably be moving over to, across the bypass to look at this, a similar rezoning.
And no opposition from the landowner on the CC train?
A lot of questions. Obviously, that's focused on the commercial changes along Commerce Road, questions about traffic. And working with Dr. Washington and the area out there, and Barton Lanier owns the corner properties, who I believe did want commercial zoning there, but working with staff, the O and I proves to be a better transitional district because it doesn't allow your retail uses, your gas stations, your convenience stores. It's, it's, it's just as it says, it's your office uses, office uses which are less impactful than a commercial.
On Friday, Barton Lanier did call me and state that he is supportive of this rezoning. Unfortunately, he has a conflict this evening, so he wasn't able to be here. But he did authorize me to report to you and the council that yes, he does support the rezonings as shown.
Okay. And we don't believe that the traffic impact is of any substantial concern changing it to CC?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, and let's discuss traffic a minute. The industrial traffic would bring a form of large trucks and heavy utilization to that community. While the commercial may produce more vehicles, it will be more cars and trucks rather than large vehicles. So there is a trade-off there. There will be, if all of this is developed as is shown, there'll be a reduction of vehicles coming from potential multiple family. There will be an increase for the commercial, but there'll be a positive on the fact that you're eliminating large-scale commercial trucks.
Also, I may add that the way that this all occurred was that when a property owner passed away, her children decided to sell a piece of their property on Arnold Road. And unbeknownst to the property owners that lived on Arnold Road, the new acquired owner decided to tear down that previous dwelling and erect a new duplex. Well, the residents basically felt that, one, it didn't, it was not harmonious to their neighborhood, and that it was destroying, basically, the picturesque neighborhood that they have lived in for so many years. And even though they had complaints with the city, because the way that the UDO was written, the staff had no choice but to issue the permit as Mr. King, Mr. Smith indicated because that particular complex was within the UDO. So since then, the residents have come forth to want their concerns, not because they did not want a new dwelling to come into the neighborhood, they just didn't want anything to come and disrupt what their normal neighborhood had looked like. And if it continued, it would surely change the face of the neighborhood. So as Mr. King and Mr. Ryan has alluded, the citizens of Arnold Road have come out, as well as Washington and Carver, to talk about what a new zoning would look like and how that would impact their neighborhood and their place that they called home. Many of these residents are basically third, if not fourth and fifth generation, so they want to preserve their inheritance and their homeland that they have in the city of Jacksonville. So we, the city staff, including myself, have met with the residents. And although Dr. Woodruff talked about a trade-off, it's the lesser of two evils. Which one do we want to go to? Because regardless of the UDO, you're gonna have some positives and you're gonna have some negatives. But at the end of the day, which one can you live with? And the citizens, although they still have some concerns, and they still would like to talk with city staff about the future impact, particularly with DOT and if any changes in roadway is going to happen with Commerce Road, with Arnold Road connecting with the back of Coleman Drive, with Coleman, Sandy Run Apartments, they still have valid concerns that needs to be addressed whenever we can meet with them to bring them abreast, to let them know that the changes, if they occur tonight, are still going to have their best interest because they do not want to feel that if the land is rezoned, then they wake up and it's like a bait and switch. We thought we was voting for something and we was getting something, but in return, we did not get what we want. So we need to put those fears aside and to assure the residents that the city is standing up for them and speaking up for them. So at the end of the day, when they go to where they call home, home is truly indeed their home to them.
Well, the thing that, that you have to recognize, though, is with Commerce Road, even though the changes are CC and O and I, there's still gonna be a tremendous amount of impact that's uncontrollable regardless of that. But in terms of the duplex that can be built, I would agree with that. This is the better of the two evils. But I don't think we can mitigate the amount of traffic patterns that are coming through or what may go on, on those parcels connected to Commerce Road, to the left and to the right.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And we understand that because even on, even on Country Club Road, there is a sign. If you're coming onto Country Club Road just after you pass by Church's Chicken, my memory serves me correctly, there is a sign, if that sign is still there that was put up by DOT, that only so many amounts of weight, I think no more than a 35-ton truck can come down Country Club Road because that sign is already there. Yes, we, we understand that definitely about Commerce Road, absolutely.
Jeremy, there's a church at the end of Arnold Road. Is that impacted here now? Is that?
The, there, I know of two churches at the end of Coleman Drive, right there, there is the.
One at the very end of Arnold Drive, and I see it's gonna be in RM.
It's in that circle.
At the very end.
At the very end.
It will, with this rezoning, it's, it's not, it's a grandfathered use. It will continue to be a grandfathered use. Yes, sir.
It'll be nonconforming here?
We allow, we allow churches in RF, in a seven.
Use permit.
Special use. So you're saying that they, they'd have to get a special use in order to, because I'm concerned about the damage from a hurricane.
If they wanted to expand or repair, they would have to, have to do that.
Come back for a special use permit.
They would have to get a special use permit. And I apologize for not recalling that because we looked at, you know, what could we do to rezone it? And because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac in the neighborhood, there's no zoning designation that works specifically to allow it that wouldn't be considered a spot zoning because of the abundance of residential around it. So changing from RMF LD to RSF 7 impacts it, it's a zero impact. It's nonconforming now, and it will still be nonconforming, can exist unless they want to expand. Very much like we worked with the church there on Jack Circle a couple of months ago, where they were a nonconforming, they obtained a special use permit to expand.
Mr. Smith, you wouldn't happen to have any pictures of that duplex on Arnold Road, would you?
Unfortunately, I do not. It's very vanilla box. Yeah, I mean, it had potential when I look at it, but not when you compare it to the nice established single-family in there.
But they didn't do anything wrong.
No, no.
They didn't do anything wrong, but.
Well, what I'm saying is, under the property rights.
They didn't make it conform to the neighborhood, right. They didn't do anything wrong, but it sticks like a sore thumb, truly.
I mean, it, it met the.
Jeremy, what is actually behind, right behind, is there, what, just behind Sandy Run Apartments and at the end of Arnold Road, beyond that church?
Just woods.
It's woods right now, right?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a transmission line, a power line, and it is vacant, undeveloped at this time.
Yeah, that's Sandy Run.
That's what he's talking about, right back here.
So it could be an industrial impact on that area going forward?
Potentially, and.
So what you're saying is, you leave that as IND, you can have industry back there coming off of Coleman Drive? Under that picture there?
And that'd definitely impact residential areas.
Potentially. I mean, they would have to be scrutinized by our transportation department, go through traffic analysis, and it may.
Does it make sense to leave that industrial if Coleman's the only ingress and egress?
It actually isn't, it's closed off.
So where's the access?
Just see it to the south on this map.
Off of Fluff Drive. Yeah, that's it, it's off of Fluff Drive. You can't just get to it.
That, that is bordering on the industrial park, correct?
Yes, sir.
On the opposite side? Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Smith? Hold on, hold on, hold on just a sec. Any other questions, Mr. Smith, from the council?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So this time, I will recess the regular council meeting, open up the public hearing on this matter now. Yes, if you would come up, please, to the podium up here. Right up here? Yes, ma'am, thank you for coming tonight. And if you would, please state your name and address for the clerk, so she can record that.
Yes, my name is Carolyn Goma. I live at 2258 Anzalo Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. I apologize, but being here in the midst of you, and I thank God for all of you, but when I heard him speaking, and I don't know if I can say anything, but I wanted to know was, when he said that the building, once it got torn down, or something happened to it, those people that spent all that money to get that duplex, are you saying that they will not be able to come back? That's, that's the part that bothered me, for you to say, like, well, if a storm comes, something comes through. Because I remember I was in this building before when they were trying to get that built, and just thinking, somebody has invested their money, but now you're gonna tell me because you're rezoning, zoning, that if something happens, you can't bring it back. Did I misunderstand you?
No, ma'am. We have a number of non- We have a number of non-conformities throughout the city. And anytime they are, in order to not have non-conformities, exist forever, that we have a threshold that when they hit that from a damage standpoint or a casualty, a disaster, the majority of the time, unless the zoning's in place to allow it to be rebuilt, it cannot.
Yeah, that's what I didn't understand, because I just remember all the trouble that they were going to, to you, to get that built. Now, all of a sudden, you're telling me, if something comes through, you can't come back? That bothered me. I apologize for wanting to speak out.
Because basically, they didn't, they got it built, but we didn't even understand that there was no zoning in process at that point.
Thank you, ma'am.
So it became non-conforming as a result, because the zoning, it wasn't zoned for single-family, correct?
Currently, the zoning allows, allows, currently as of right now, allows a duplex to be built that are proposed.
They're going from conforming to non-conforming, once we make this change.
Yeah, so, but if it's destroyed, you say up to 50% or more, or more, it won't be able to.
Turn it to a single-family house, yes.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak also? Please, if you would come up front, please. Thank you, Jeremy. Usually, if it's 50% damage, it's pretty much done, anybody has to be really clear.
I'm Macy James, 360 Dudley Street. And I'm here tonight, I wanna know why I...
Mr. Mayor, this is the next two, but this is not on this side.
Let's wait and catch this one the next time around.
Next time.
Thank you, I'm gonna give you a chance. Why don't you sit on the front row, so you won't have so far to have to come? Anyone about this particular issue we're talking about right this minute? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing in this matter. Council, you're being asked to consider the proposed request for a rezon.
Ma'am Phillips, I make the motion that council approve the rezoning based on the findings of A through J found in the affirmative that the rezoning advances the public interest by allowing for more orderly and logistic development, and it brings the zoning in compliance with adopted plans and corrected several non-conforming uses.
I have a second from Mr. Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify with a say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to item number seven. And this is ordinance directing the code enforcement official and community engagement department to demolish and remove the dwelling at 343 Dudley Street. And we're gonna be... Hang on just a second. Okay, make sure I got everything here. This is Jason Larson, our chief zoning code enforcement officer, gonna be presenting this item. Also, Jason.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you for hearing us tonight. It's good to be back in Jacksonville after being here, served from 96 to 2000. It's a, it's a magnificent change. I remember seeing, not being able to go certain places as they were off limits. The city staff, the council, the citizens themselves have done just an amazing job of cleaning up this city, and we continue to do so. Since approximately 2009, 2010, as of today, we have successfully demolished 122 different structures in the city. All but one of those, of course, were vacant. One of the last areas that we're focusing on is Georgetown. We have, we have taken 10 homes, we've demolished and removed 10 homes from Dudley Street. And then we've also installed sidewalks, restrooms, playground, a fitness center at the Georgetown Park. So tonight, code enforcement has two cases we would, we would like to present for demolition. Both, both structures are on Dudley Street. On Dudley Street, we have already removed one manufactured home and another home, both through our voluntary program. These last two, when I was doing my research for these properties, the first minimum housing case that I could find on these was back in 1993. So these have been on, these have been known for a long time that these are, these are issues within the city. The first one, so the first agenda item is to request for an ordinance directing community engagement to have the abandoned multi-unit structure at 343 Dudley Street demolished and removed according to provisions of North Carolina revised statutes. This is Dudley Street, this is the parcel that we're talking about, right here on Dudley. So further up from there, we have already removed one home and then, and also a manufactured home. So this is the structure. There have been numerous notices, violations, hearings that have been sent out to get this taken care of. There have been permits obtained and not fulfilled, contractors brought in and not completed. As you can see, the, the structure is in, is in disrepair. And kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Smith was talking about earlier, over 50% of this structure is, is gone and not, and not going to be able to be repaired. So it has, it has to be removed according to our codes and according to general statutes. And most recently, in March of this year, the findings, finding and facts were issued to the homeowner. The estimated cost is approximately, or I'm sorry, the approximate value of this, according to the assessor's office, is $13,190. So the, the cost to repair that is well over the 50% margin that's required. It was ordered to be repaired, altered, or improved to minimum standards or demolished, which was within 90 days. So that would be at the end of May, and of course, it's now October. Community engagement has a voluntary demolition program that several people have taken advantage of. The city comes in, we assess the situation, we offer the program, say, hey, you know, we have a program that can have these structures demolished at no cost to you. Of course, that, that means there's no house standing at the end, but when we started, it wasn't inhabitable in the first place. This gives them the opportunity to rebuild. And in most cases, if they choose to sell, the land is actually at a higher value once there's no structure than, than if it was still remained. So either way you look at it, it's a benefit to the citizen. The owners of this property have refused to comply with direction given from both code enforcement and the building departments. And then, so the code states, "After failure of an owner of a deteriorated or dilapidated dwelling unit to comply with an order of the inspection within the time specified therein, if injunctive relief has not been sought or has not been granted as provided, the inspector shall submit to the council an ordinance ordering the inspector to cause such dwelling or dwelling unit to be repaired, altered, improved, vacated, closed, removed, or demolished, as provided in the original order of the inspector." I've moved on to the interior. I'm gonna give Mr. Bryan a chance to come up and speak with you. He's, he has done inspections of the structure on the building department's side regarding minimum housing requirements. And Natasha, your consideration for the ordinance directing community engagement to demolish and remove the structure. So before I bring Mr. Bryan up, I'd like to afford you the opportunity to ask any questions about the structure or the process.
Is there one water meter or three?
I believe there's one. This is a, this is a three-unit
Right.
building. And I'm, I'm pretty sure it just has one, one water meter.
Those are electric boxes, or...
And it's, it, we don't, we don't have that information with us right now, but we can get that information.
It's uninhabited, correct?
Completely, yes, sir. And, and as Mr. Bryan will show you, on the inside, it's, it is absolutely uninhabitable. There's no, there's no flooring, it's, he can get into that. But any other questions about the process or what we're asking?
You said it started in 93, where you...
When I look back to see how many times we've, we've addressed this property, I was only able to go back as far as 1993, yes, sir. So it's been 26 years. And it's, so it was uninhabitable then, it was a minimum housing case in 1993, and it has not, it definitely has not improved in that time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'd like to bring up Danny Bryan at this time.
Okay. Everybody, city council, mayor, staff. I've been here since 1990, since 1993. So in fact of it is, we have looked at this particular structure for some time. And the interior components, that would be a, actually a ceiling shot. And they will, I'm, I'm assuming at this point, these pictures, I don't have them dated or have them exactly where, where they're at. Each one of them have a, there's, there's three different units, okay? So at each one of those, there's a entry, front entry. Let's see if I can get a better shot. This is the back of the property and the end. And then around on the other side is the actual front. I think I'm doing that right, yes. And you have a front entry and a porch area that goes on the inside of the building. From each level, there's a little porch. And this, if you look at it, you'll see that there's damage that was, that was done by the actual rain event. There's some mildew, some mold, insulation, you could see that it has fallen out. The ceiling, as far as this is concerned, has fallen again. This is the floor. There was some repairs that were made. I'll give them the opportunity to say that there was repairs that were made, but they were done without permits and they were done without any inspections. They were inadequate. There is a crawl space in this, I did take a look at through the crawl space vents, to try to see what was there. Those are the thresholds where you walk through, where the door would have been, okay? Go back, yep. And there's an overview of the actual roof system. Okay, it's been tarp'd up for a long time. And this all was prior to the, the storm events, so that have a whole lot to do with the hurricanes. Now, I have some history behind this. I was asked to go out and investigate the commercial building, which that's what does we be considered as, the three apartments. In that process, I entered the property with community development. We went inside and went around the outside, and the power has been removed from this property forever. I mean, I don't know when the last time was it did have power. And if you have any questions, I think the pictures take care of the presentation.
Any questions of Mr. Bryan?
Let me ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind. From the building code standpoint, what is your professional opinion of the integrity of the roof trust system?
The roof trust system has been compromised by cause of the weathering. It has actually sagged, if you'll look at some of the pictures. It has deflected, and that's just a term for, it's giving up eventually. It will completely fall in without some type of repair. And then the repairs, you know, that's what we're basing everything on is, how much does the property cost? How much of the actual structure, not the actual ground? How much does that cost in comparison to having to renovate it? And then when it reaches that 50% mark, in our code and in the general statute, it talks about 50%, 50% of what the taxable value of that particular property, is that 13,000?
Yes.
Okay. So you can take 50% of 13,000, and you can see that that will not fix the roof.
So, question. The floor joists inside, what's your professional opinion of the integrity of the floor joist?
The floor joists are in the same compromised position. The actual floor joists, and then you have your subfloor, which is over the top of that. They have tried to make some repairs on that, but it has deteriorated based on moisture that comes from the ground and the moisture that comes in from the roof. And over a period of time, the mold sets in and just destroys it.
Question. So basically, this whole structure would have to be gutted from the inside, including created a, a new roof?
Yes.
Not just shingles, but a roof structure itself?
Yeah, we would also ask for engineering in this particular application, because it is a commercial application. We would ask to have the blocks evaluated, because they have deteriorated over the years. Block deteriorates just like any other material.
Other questions?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm gonna recess the regular council meeting. Now, I'm gonna have a public hearing in this matter. Well, she can, you can't. You're just gonna, you're just gonna stand with her. Okay. Ma'am, if you would, again, please state your name and address for the clerk, please.
Macy James, 360 Dudley Street.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Macy, they want you to tell them what you want to...
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Okay, sir, I've had a problem with them two, with my buildings in, on Dudley Street. Houses out. They go in and stay three or four weeks, and they be, wind up being able to move to social service or over at our region and P. And they got me where that I said, ain't no need to try to rent. And they go in and mess the houses up, and I have to redo them. Now, they, they talking about all that work and stuff to be done. I got an accident January 9th of 18. That work that needed to be done would have been done, but after I got hurt, I can't go up on the ladder. They telling me now, don't climb. But I have been bullied, run over with a car, in my own car, and every time I get somebody in one of them houses, they wind up in social service or region and P. And they got where I stopped renting. And I moved in my house myself, because most of the time, I could go over there and it's quiet. And as far as the $13,000 to fix that house, my children will give it to me, because I raised them and they're mine, my son worked hard. Now, I have a contractor now that's worked with me. I had a contractor, and I don't wanna get into all that. He come in with some different errors and things that he was having with the inspectors over here. I said, "Son, don't you lose your license messing with me." I said, "I'm 87 years old, God have blessed me to work and live and be happy. I drive anywhere I want to, night or day. And don't you mess around here and lose your license trying to help a mama." So he went on back to dinner. He left me with the message of that I had a mess. No, I don't have a mess. I went around and checked, they told me to get a licensed contractor. I went all over Jacksonville, Wilmington, everywhere you could mention, looking for a licensed contractor. And all the men that's been working building all these nice houses and things, didn't have no license. I went to Coastal Community College and finished the contractor's course. And I quit whining with it, because I didn't feel like it was worth it. I said, "Everybody saying you too old for that? You ought to be somewhere sitting down." I can't sit down. Now, since I have got hurt, I can sit in that chair a hour or two hours, I don't hurt. When I get up, my pain is like, I don't know what. I wasn't used to pain before I got sick, before I got hurt here. But now, I hurt. I wasn't on no kind of medication. I still, when I hurt so bad and can't sleep, I try one more big white pill that doctor give me, and I drop off to sleep. But I know when I take that pill, not to get up next morning and get in my car and take off, because I'm just like a drunk person. So I don't do that. I don't care what I got to do when I take my medicine, I don't go nowhere, I wait. But I feel that during my traveling here in Jacksonville, I work, I tend to my business, I never give you all no trouble whatsoever. My children was the same way. Yeah, I own other property, but that house, I press clothes up there, southern cleaner, at night, and would go home and mix the mud for my husband to put their house together. There's nothing wrong with the house. There's nothing wrong with the house. FEMA went in there and inspected. That's another thing, they have never given me nothing. When you all give a grant to remodel the old people houses, they don't give me a five cent. They tell me, "You don't need it." I go on and do what need to be done to my house, myself, out of my pocket. My house now, and my, that building, you see that? Everything been bought for, I paid for it out of my pocket. My taxes, when they come up on the taxes, I, now, I don't keep up with my bills like I ought to. I got to start back at it. I let my taxes get behind their say. Last July, I have, last, I had to pay thirteen, nineteen thousand dollars for taxes. I had three days to pay them that money. I called my family in, and when I got through crying and praying, God give me that nineteen thousand dollars when I paid my taxes. Now, I had, I went over and checked the tax places to find out. Did I have the same time from now until July to pay my taxes? The lady said, "No, they have changed it." I ain't had time to do no whole lot of reading, because I'm always helping somebody else. I do a lot of social service work with older people like myself. Because most of us, when we get fifty and sixty, seventy and eighty, your family don't care nothing about you. And I go and stay with them. That's why you look at my house and think nobody ain't there. But when that guy went through my house, and when FEMA come through here, he checked and he told me, he said, "We can't give you a check, because your house is livable." They sent me letters.
This house, this house right here?
Yeah, not that one.
Not that one.
Okay.
The other house.
Well, let's talk about that one in a few minutes.
But that house there, they closed it down, because the lady got mad with me about the water bill. And I wasn't even there in the possession. They cut the water off, because the boy didn't pay the water bill. I left the money with him. And when the lady went out, they went out to talk about the water, he raised steam. So, they cut the water off. Quite enough that they had to move. I said, "When you cut the water off, you got to find somewhere to stay." I'm asking you all, their house, my children need the places to stay. I got four children coming out of college, two of them is out. And I don't have to worry about getting no work done. He told me to get a contractor with license. I found one. He saw he was going to run into trouble with his license. I told him, "You go ahead." I found other contractors to help me with my building. Most of them didn't have no license. But I, two of them or three of them told me, "They went and talked with you, they might not did it." They were trying to get rid of me. And now, I'm before you all. I need my houses now. I'm old, I ain't able to do nothing else. My doctor tells me that that staggering are leaving me, because I take my exercise on the bed. I have a problem. The, I have somebody following me when I go to my doctor. I couldn't even take my exercise and stuff at the doctor's office, because when I get there, the doctor, nurse will meet me and tell me, "Your doctor ain't coming in today, you got to make another appointment."
Hey, Ms. Macy, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When is the last time somebody actually stayed in this building, you remember?
Uh, I think three thousand and, I think it was, uh, two oh, three oh eight, two oh eight, something along in there.
Two thousand eight?
Yeah.
You know, based on the way they discussed this, this is a very unsafe building. And really, I don't think, they were saying it would cost a whole lot more than thirteen thousand dollars to fix that.
We ain't worrying about what it costs. I want the building fixed.
That's why she's spending the nineteen thousand dollars to keep it.
That's right. That, I mean, if I knowing that I was going to lose my building, I didn't give my children the thirteen thou, the nineteen thousand dollars that I paid taxes on, and just let the land went.
And I guess the issue is that it goes back since ninety-three, since they've been having problems, from what I understand. So, they are saying that the work hadn't been done in a.
There wasn't no, we kept the houses up. Whenever we had a leak, anything need to be done to them houses, I put them boys in there to work. That's why I went back to school, so I know about halfway what to do. But I didn't keep up with the cord that supposed to been kept up with about fixing the house. That's why when he told me to get a contractor with license, I didn't fuss at him. I didn't get mad. I went done what he told me to do. I have a contractor here now, young man, is willing to help me with my houses, if you all give him permission. He got license, but he have got so much work. And see, that's another thing.
Can't, can't get the time, can't he?
You can't do but just so much.
Excuse me just a minute. Danny, up to the.
Can you?
Go ahead. How many citations have been issued?
I can't answer that question. I can tell you that we have repeatedly looked at this location. Usually, I turn this over to the code enforcement side. Once I go to the structure and I find out that there is a problem, then we go through a hearing. The hearing process is to bring the individual in, discuss it with them, try to find out exactly what the problems are.
And there's been, has there been a hearing?
There hasn't been a hearing. Yes.
How long ago?
It was March of two thousand nineteen.
Right.
Was the owner present?
The owner was present. We had a hearing, and this is the way we normally conduct that. We do certified mail and regular mail. She reacted to those, she came, Ms. Macy came. We had a discussion, and during the process of that, we'd had several discussions prior to the hearing, okay, at the site. And during the, the hearing, Ms. James actually said that she would bring a contractor. She said, "If I could get a contractor." Let me restate that. Fact is, is I determined that it was at a condemnable state, that it need to be demoed, and that we felt like it was over fifty percent of the tax value, and it was. So, at that point, we have the option of repair, or vacate, or demo. So, demolition makes more sense in this particular application than the rest, so we advised her to do that. She said at that time, "If we determine that we can get a general contractor and do this type work, would you consider that?" We gave her that option. The general contractor at this point is a person that's licensed by our state. They obtained a permit, they go through the process. Because actually, the total cost of construction, I feel like was well above the thirty thousand dollar mark. Our state recognizes, you know, permit processes and licensing for people, for general contracting, has to be at the thirty thousand and above mark. So, under that, sometimes you can actually get a permit issued to an individual. That's what Mrs. James wanted us to do, was issue the permit to her, so that she could do the reconstruction. She brought that up, and during the hearing, we made the decision that that, in that ninety-day period, if she would get a licensed contractor and adhere to what she said, and repair this structure in that ninety-day period, then we would go along with what she said. All right? In the process of that, I was called, she had a contractor, Mr. Lanier, Lanier Contracting, I believe is his contracting name. He came, he called, he obtained a permit. We did just exactly what we said we would do. Issued the permit, scheduled a consultation. That was my first decision. I said, "Louis, why don't you call us and let me go to the site with you and walk through the building, walk around the building, and come up with a plan." Okay? And determine what it is I'm looking for, as far as this building is concerned. So, we did, that was scheduled. They, they never met me, they never showed up at the job site. So, I called him, and they rescheduled. And the second time, he did the same thing. So, they did come out, they did evaluate the property, they were determining that, you know, this is what we're going to need for material. And the contractor made us contact, or had made contact with me and said that this structure is definitely needing repair. It is going to be a lot of work to be able to bring this back into compliance. And I said, "I agree with you." So, during the process of all of that going on, Mrs. James, and my understanding, Mr. Lanier, had a disagreement somewhere along the line. That's what Mr. Lanier has told me. And then he called to have his permit revoked. He asked to have his name taken off of the list. So, at that point, Mrs. James and family members continued on working. So, I had the power removed from the home, and the next step I took was to place a stop work order on that location until we could get some type of action through another contractor.
So, you basically, your initial, your initial evaluation was to demolish the home. But because you were trying to extend some courtesy to this, this owner here.
Yes.
You allowed them to provide a contractor that would do the work appropriately in a period of time. Contractor came, did what he was supposed to do, got his license, but never executed any work. Called back, revoked his permit, and nothing has been done since by a contractor.
By a contractor, correct.
There was some work done by family members with no permits, just doing whatever, but even that work is not adequate.
No, it's not.
We didn't do that, we didn't work without the contract.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to clarify what's been taken.
During the hearing, we also get to a certain point, and we call it a finding of facts order. And that's what was the defining of facts. If you'll obtain the contractor and go through the permit process, we'll back off at that particular point. Allow the contractor and you to provide the structural reconditioning of this building. And once you get that done and get through an inspection process, we've done it before, we'll certainly do it again.
And the ninety days started in March.
That was in April. So, she fulfilled her, her side of it by getting a contractor. It was difficult. It was during the time when we were just coming out from underneath the hurricane, so contractors had plenty to do. So, we listened, and at the same time, we still had obligated through that hearing to stay within the ninety-day period. Now, there is a opportunity for her to have extended it somewhere along the line. We tried to obtain a contractor. I tried to give her names, you know, the city official. Being an inspector, I'm not supposed to recommend people, but we tried to advise her that there are other people that she could obtain. There was some discussion about it, and I think she got some family members to continue doing the work, even after the stop work order was issued.
We didn't keep on working. We had, I put, when you give me that paper that morning saying, "Stop work," we stopped. I had fifty-two bones of shingles out there to be worked with. And they said, "We going to put these shingles on top of the house, that way nobody won't get them."
When did you, when did you buy the shingles?
When did I buy them? When the contractor was there. When the con, when I got hold of the contractor that I had, I bought mostly all the material that I thought he would need to work with. And he didn't like that. He wanted to go pick up his own material. But the reason I bought the material was because the boys would get my material on their credit card, on their car. So, by them getting it that way, I told him to give me a list of everything we had to have, and he did. And when, uh, he come by the house and wanting to go in and look, he know himself that the material was laying there and flowed in.
Well, there was material, there were shingles on top of the house.
But the shingles we had on the truck, when we moved away from, when he brought me that paper, they was on the truck and the trailer. They put them on top of the house, so nobody want stealing, because we was thinking of leave. But they still went, got them shingles.
This is the house too. Now, this has nothing to do with the commercial properties that we're looking at.
This is her house.
This is her house. Two separate, no, it's two separate.
Yeah, I know, but she's talking about her house.
She is, she's talking about two separate properties, three, three forty-three.
Let me, let me have this for just a minute. Is, ma'am, is there anything else that we can, you can put on as far as evidence, as far as why the city shouldn't condemn this, this building? The one in the picture right there? Why shouldn't the city, why shouldn't the city go full condemnation?
I worked night and day to get that building up, both of them. At the time, I had children, had about five or six women had to stay in the house with me, because they didn't have nowhere to stay. And I told my old man, I said, "If we had another house, they wouldn't have to stay in the house with us." They were young, and they were having babies. And most, the two of them, the mama had put them outdoors, they didn't have nowhere to stay. And I worked to try to get the stuff, to get the house together. And Leo, you probably know him, one of you, used to work with some of the blocks. He was so sorry for my husband till he come and laid the blocks on that building. All we had to do was get his material, and him and my old man laid them blocks after they worked all day.
But ma'am, the real issue here is that to get this commercial property in order, you're going to have to spend a substantial amount of money.
I don't mind it.
She's asking for time.
It's not, yeah, but we're out of time.
One of, one of the concerns is that this property has been going through some stuff for over twenty-something years now, and it has not been action on it.
But all we have to do is redo it and fix it. And them boys have already spent my money. And when I ask them to come and go to work, they'll come and go. The only thing is, like, we tried to do what he told us, by working with a licensed contractor. And it's hard to find a licensed contractor. Most of the men that I come in contact with building them houses didn't have no license.
Well, thank you, thank you for your testimony. I think we're going to have to stop at this point and, and go forward. The council's going to have to weigh the testimony that you've given, the testimony that has come from the city staff there, and we'll make our recommendation based on, on that. So, unless, thank you.
I just want to know, you may give us some time, though.
Well, that's, that, that's something we can discuss, anyway. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, if you don't mind, let me summarize the staff's position on this. This home has been uninhabitable for, in our opinion, over twenty-five years. What you've heard from your professional staff is that water damage has impacted the truss system. It's all going to have to be replaced. It has impacted, you can't put shingles, you can put shingles up there if you want, but it doesn't change the, the lack of structural integrity of the roof system. Number two, it has a crawl space, which means that it has floor joists. The floor has been completely destroyed by water. The electrical system has been completely destroyed by lack of maintenance, water, and age. The concrete block building, we believe that the concrete blocks have in fact been compromised, because if you don't maintain concrete block and you let water constantly seep through them, they lose some of their structural integrity. We have offered Ms. James on repeated cases, repeated opportunities to have this voluntarily torn down, where she will own the property, but the cost of demolition would be borne by community development block grant funds. She has consistently refused. Ms. James is a wonderful lady. She has good intentions. The difficulty, though, is, as a community, we have the responsibility to see that slum and blight is eliminated. You as a council, and we as a staff, have, as has been testified to you today, now removed over a hundred and twenty vacant and dilapidated homes. Almost all of those have been done through voluntary demolition. We have repeatedly offered that to Ms. James, she has refused. The staff this evening is asking you, as the mayor and council, to enforce the city code and to direct that this building be torn down, that a lien be placed upon the property, and that at a future date, that lien will be collected either through the sale of the property or through some other method. I'd like to ask the city attorney.
Hold, hold, hold everything, just a minute. Quick question. How many other homes or habitable structures are there in this area that may be impacted by this property?
Well, if you look at Collins Heights, which is on one side of Dudley, and then you look at the Georgetown community on the other side, Mayor, I would guess you're talking, pick a number, seventy to a hundred homes.
And some, and this could be, this could impact their property values. So, Mr. Jackson, did you have something to add before we take this? First off, I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter. Now, we're going to discuss, okay?
I mean, I understand the value of my own grandfather and my great-grandfather built their house. And at one point in time, I had to. And at one point in time, I had to make a hard decision myself. When the city came to me and I had to get my, my grandfather's house burned down. I tried, you know, I couldn't get funds to do it myself. I, um, and the woods were so tough, I couldn't even cover up the windows by trying to board them up myself. They were definitely made to stay there forever, but unfortunately, and one of my concerns became also the safety of it. We have a lot of kids that are, as a matter of fact, the other day when I, I rode through Dudley on that, on, on that road, there were about five kids that was just running out there by themselves. And, um, across the street from where this, uh, property is, kinda diagonally from it. And the only thing I could think of too with that, and with those structures, these kids by themselves end up in one of these structures, some kinda way, that could be an even bigger problem, 'cause there's a huge safety issue there. There has been a lot of time that elapsed, and it's, I've tried to work with folks in the past with that, and because of the amount of it would cost to actually bring that up to any livable condition, not even just cold, but any kinda livable condition, um, I mean, it's, it is great, and I, I, I just don't see, you know, you know, if this would have been an effort with neighbors coming together like they used to to try to assist, um, this, this could have probably went farther down the road, but unfortunately, you don't have those same people, or they're not coming together, or the communication isn't there, or something. So it, it, it's, it's real difficult to me to try to give any additional time, and I hate it. I hate it, but it's like, I don't see, after all that time I've gone back and forth, my, I have a lot of family buried in Georgetown. So some of these properties I have noticed for a long period of time. But it's, it's really difficult for me to, um, to extend the time. It's difficult for me to tell you that I can't extend, work towards extending the time, um, because of those safety issues. So.
Any other comments?
I was just gonna mention, I too went down there personally, as Richard recommended, just to see what was, what we had there, and, uh, it's just evident that despite what's been said, the effort has not been made, even a minimal effort to maintain what could be just a bit of tidiness, that there's debris on the other location that is, it's, it's an eyesore, it's dangerous, it's been going on for so many years. I mean, I'm as big a property rights advocate as I think sits up here, and for people to have the right to do with their property what they can, but with the lack of tangible effort, it's just plain that this is about the only route we have to rectify the situation. I mean, I hate, you know, and as someone that may sometimes believe all things are possible, I, I don't believe it's even possible here to rehab this with the situation.
One thing I would wanna say, though, um, I know the opportunity has been offered in the past to try to get it demolished, and it had been refused, but I, I would love to see if that can be put back on the table so she won't have to bear the burden of the price and still maintain her property.
That's one thing I wanted to point out to the mayor and council, may give you some consolation, that the ordinance on page two says that, uh, once you, if you move forward and you adopt the ordinance, she has ninety, let me get to the exact spot here. That the owners of, that the owners of interest here and above are ordered to vacate and close them, uh, and so forth, and within ninety days from the date of the adoption of this ordinance. So she'd have ninety days to come, and we would agree and still allow her to use the program that the city has for all of its citizens to take this down within the next ninety days, so there wouldn't be a lien on her property if the council does move down this way. So again, there's a ninety day window after the adoption of the ordinance, which again, she could come, and the, the city would certainly allow her to sign papers and to take it down at no expense to her or her family, et cetera, if she so desired. Again, after ninety days passed, then of course, the city would, if the council did adopt the ordinance, would, uh, take the action that you, uh, would have, be empowering, that is, to demolish it and place the lien on the property for those costs.
Let's try to make an effort to make sure she understands that, please.
And I do wanna make sure that, you know, what Mr. Carter's saying, I want Mrs. James to understand, this ninety days is not a ninety day period to get a contractor and do any work. If you vote this evening that it must be torn down, then the vote has been taken, it must be torn down. The ninety days is to give Ms. James the opportunity to decide, does she want a multi-thousand-dollar lien on her property to cover the cost of tearing it down, or is she now willing to sign the voluntary demolition? But that ninety days has nothing to do with fixing the property, it has to do with the choice.
Ninety days to sign that demolition, or to decide that.
That is correct.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's more than clear, and this time, I'm gonna go ahead and pose this, uh, to this, to the council and entertain a motion for demolition ordinance.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance directing the code enforcement official and community engagement department to demol, demolish and remove the dwelling at three forty-three Dudley Street, units A, B, and C.
And we have a second for Mr. Jackson, any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. And this is a directing code enforcement to demolish the structure located at three sixty Dudley Street, okay? And Jason Larson will be, uh, providing us information on that. Jason?
Mayor and Council, uh, this is, this is a property basically across the street. It is a single-family structure. Uh, this is the, this is the exterior, and this, uh, this structure was in that, uh, hearing the same time as across the street. So this three sixty Dudley and the three forty-three Dudley, we conducted a hearing at the same time for both structures. So this is the, the exterior of the structure, uh, on the outside, again, the same, same conditions are at this house. And then, of, of course, we can have Mr. Bryan come in and explain the inside, um, as far as the inhabitable-ness of this house. Again, numerous notices of violations, the hearings, the inspections, uh, all were conducted with no, with no repair. This house, the, uh, approximate value is twelve thousand one hundred ninety dollars. Of course, the structures, the repairs, you can see, gonna be well over fifty percent of that. So this is, this is the same situation we're in at this house as we were across the street. Again, we offered, uh, the demo program for this structure, and basically, the, the conversation during the last agenda item was more directed towards this property. So again, they refused to comply, um, but the same, the same offer is for that. I do wanna note, um, that this, this property, uh, the taxes for, for this year due for twenty nineteen is three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, and Ms. James does have, uh, a residence on, uh, Berga Highway in Maple Hill, um, so this is, again, an abandoned property, but she's not residing in, this is a vacant structure. I'm sorry? The water cut off. I believe there hasn't been water on this property since twenty fourteen.
The water hasn't been cut off. And I was living over there at the time, all the time when I'm not on my.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna give you a chance to pause.
I don't have water provisions for this property.
Electricity?
Sir?
Power? No power?
Power, there's no.
The power was removed.
How long ago, you know? It's been a while.
Uh, in March, I'm blanking. Actually, kind of a rundown of the items, I had to make a list of the things that I had done, 'cause I had been back and forth to these properties several times, we kinda got from three sixty to three forty-three. The permit process, let me state that for the, the record, that three sixty is her home, that's her, that was the house that she was talking about that had the permit. The others building never obtained a permit, there was no work ever done to that one. All right, to answer your question, the power was removed sometime in the April, and that was after the permit was, it was in May. In May the eighth, at that time, I was actually issued a stop work order, and I also removed the, uh, power at that particular point. Now, it had been removed previously in years past, all right? There was temporary pole that was placed, and there was some repairs that was done at some point on the property, and the power was returned back to the property, okay? So it was, there was people in and out of it over the years, and then it was vacated and has been vacated for ten-plus years, I don't know how long that's.
So you're saying it had power by a temporary pole?
Yes, when I went to do the inspection, there had been somebody on the inside, and I actually was able to turn the oven on with all the conditions that you see inside of the building. So I went back and told him it was unsafe, and we needed to remove that during the process of, of inspection.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question here?
Let's move on.
All right, thank you, guys. So this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting up in public hearing that's required in this matter. Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, if anybody wishes to speak, but this time, we're gonna put a few little rules in place here, that, uh, I know we were a little liberal the first time with the speaking time, but we're gonna limit speaking to three minutes, and, uh, Carmen, do you have the timer? Once that timer goes off, that's the, that's gonna be, uh, the last of the testimony by each individual, so you can come on up again. Uh, you've got her name and address, so she doesn't have to waste time repeating that.
Sir, he said that I have a house and everything on, uh, three highway.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't stay there most of the time, they got a little juke joint right behind me.
And I live by myself. I should live in the house in, on Dudley Street because it's safer over there for me. The police can get the man fifteen or twenty minutes if I need them. That's mostly where I stay. Right now, I'm staying from hand to mouth, from one house to the other, on a condo, we was working on that house. Uh, see, I'm willing to pay my bill, whatever it is. It's wrong for y'all to tear my house down, I worked hard for that house. I worked hard for it, and I have kept it up, off and on, every since that I've had it. I don't stay away from it, but just so long. I let people move in, before they pay me any money, they will be gone.
Ms. Macy, when was the last time you stayed in this, this house? When is the last time you stayed in this house?
In April, I'm staying there when he cut my lights out.
Ms. Macy, let me say something about him cutting the lights out. The truth of the matter is, that was an extreme fire hazard, there's nowhere in the world you should have been staying in this house.
There was no fire, how was it a fire hazard?
Because of the condition of the house with power going to it, you could have had electrical fire at any moment.
But we didn't have one.
Isn't that safe to say, Danny?
Because she was staying in there, working in the house, so that's why they had the electric on, too.
She should have been staying in there, nobody should have allowed her to stay in.
Hey, I stayed there, off and on for the last, last ten years.
I understand that, but it's.
Off and on, whenever wasn't nobody move in, I stayed there myself.
Macy, let, Ms. Macy, let me say.
If you gonna tell them to go ahead on and.
Now, this is what I want you to understand.
And throw my house down, go ahead on, too.
That's not the issue here. My, my concern more than that is there's nowhere in the world, I let my mother stay in that house, because there's a safety issue involved in that. If, first of all, is you, you got a, an electrical pro, issue, then there's mold and stuff in that house, there's no way.
Ain't no mold, wasn't no mold in it, we didn't have no leak. Danny went in there and we start, had one little place over the door where the wind blow the rain in, we didn't have no mold in that house.
Okay, I, I just want to, to say, she wanted to live in the house, if you tell her what time she has to fix it with the man, that she needs to go in there and fix the house, then give her that opportunity. You say you're gonna tear the other one down, she go in agreements with you with that, that she doesn't have the lien, but let her have her house, that if you give her time.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. We're gonna close the public hearing. Anybody else wanna speak to that? Or not all of that, that, uh, we're gonna reopen the council meeting. Counsel, any discussion, any comments on what you've heard?
It, it, I struggle with the fact that she was in this house at any point, period. But that should have been communicated prior to all that happening. There's something, there's a breakdown somewhere in communication with people that should be assisting her through this process. There's something wrong here. And that, like I said, there's nowhere in the world I would allow my mother or any other, my family members to stay in that house. That's a problem in itself. And if that's the possibility that she could ever stay in that house again, in this current condition, there's no way in this world I would, I, I could okay that. I just, that, that.
Just make the motion. Ma'am, we're, we're, we're.
I, I make a motion that the ordinance be accepted.
Let me say one word.
One word.
Since then, we have put a brand new top on that house, when I had that contractor there, that the first thing he wanted done.
And let me say this, I went by that house today. Uh, there a problem with the, uh, the trust on this, this house as well. He might have put shingles on that, but that whole roof would have to be replaced.
No, it won't.
Okay, conversation is over at this point, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? A second from anybody?
Second.
We have a second, other discussion to be made? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye to the zoning, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, ordinance, demolition ordinance. Motion carries. All right, so that brings us to, uh, to number nine, and this is the award acceptance of the, uh, the two thousand nineteen Bureau of Justice Assistance FY nineteen Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program grant, and Chief Nera will be presenting this item. Chief?
Mayor and Council? I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this, this is actually a really exciting, uh, grant for us. So the Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Program is a, a program with the Department of Justice. So we applied for that grant, we had a, we had a discussion during a workshop about this grant, and, uh, we received information that we had received this grant. Just to kinda go over why we applied for this grant, a lot of it had to do with both opioids and, or pain pills, pain, pain relievers, and heroin. We've seen a tremendous increase, in fact, two weekends ago, we, we responded to five overdoses. And when you look at some of the issues that we've had with opioids, you can see that we've had a hundred and thirty-six percent increase in overdoses, um, a hundred and six percent ca, uh, increase in crisis intervention calls, opioids that are related to child abuse and neglect, a fifty-eight percent increase, and a ten percent increase in, uh, drug-related crimes. So two years ago in two thousand sixteen, we looked at how much the opioid crisis is affecting the, the police department as far as man-hours, and we estimate around six thousand man-hours are, are used to address opioids within our community. So we looked at the, uh, we looked at the, um, Department of Justice COPE grant, and based upon another grant that you all, uh, participated in with the county, the SOAR grant, we looked, took, took that strategic plan and basically put together a strategic plan for that grant. And so that strategic plan had a number of different, uh, focuses. First of all, it kinda focused on our CIT program. So our CIT program allows officers who are specially trained to go out and to de-escalate the situation, but it also allows them to link services. And part of this grant is going to be linking services either through our LEEDS program, which is law enforcement assisted diversion, or the QRT program. which is law enforcement assisted diversion, or the QRT program, which is a post overdose response team. So from a law enforcement standpoint, what we, what we will be doing with, with some of these grant funds is, is first, if we respond to folks that are in the community that have small amounts of heroin or opioids, whether they're synthetic opioids or not, one of the things that we'll be doing is offering them the opportunity for treatment versus criminal charges so that we can get them inside the, the treatment process. And with the opening of the Dicks Crisis Center, we have a real opportunity to do that. The other thing I think that we're gonna really focus about is the back door. You know, we, we heard about that from, from TASK who came in and is working with us on a strategic plan. But from the Crisis Center, once they leave the Crisis Center, part of this grant funding will look at that back door and to the next door. So where do they go once they, once they're discharged? And how do we get them into services so we can better address their addiction? And what are the next doors? Community-based treatment, treatment on demand. And a warm handoff, which is what we're focusing on, means that there's no gap between the services when they come out of the Crisis Center and they, they get to that next step, whether it's whatever that impatient looks like or whatever those, whatever that treatment option may be. And I think the, the most important thing about that is managing the case. And, and what we're, what we're planning on doing with, with some of this funding is to hire what we call peer navigators. And those peer navigators will be folks that will, that will follow these folks once they're discharged from the Dicks Crisis Center and make sure that they get to appointments, make sure they're getting the, the right kind of treatment they need, and also looking at things like housing and jobs and all those basic necessities so they can, so they can be successful in their, in their quest to, to get rid of that addiction. So the other thing that, that we're going to really look at is the impact that opioids has had in children. And so we're partnering with the school system and we'll have actually counseling and counselors inside the school so that when somebody overdoses, one of the things that we'll focus on is being able to, to share that information with the school system and say, these children have, are in a, in a home where somebody is addicted to some type of opioid and get them into some kind of counseling so that in the future, we'll be able to, to reduce opioids in our community, both by this type of prevention effort and by the, by the efforts of looking at that next door. So we're, we are real excited about this. This is a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. It's a three-year grant. We're excited about the, the possibilities to, to be very, very effective in reducing our opioid issue. And I think that, that this is just another piece of the puzzle. The Mental Health Task Force that, that Councilman Thomas and Mayor Protem sat on, I think, was an integral part of bringing that SOAR team together, bringing that strategic plan together, and then, and then putting these pieces together. And I think this grant is one of those pieces that we think is going to be very effective in, in our fight to, to address opioids in our community. So I'd be glad to answer any questions or.
I'll make a comment, Chief. I can't thank you and the team enough for the amount of effort that you put in to look in, in every nook and cranny and finding so many different ways of, of attacking this, this epidemic. And I think what you've done here is certainly gonna give us a tool to really follow up when they come out of that center, which is the most crucial time because we know that when they come through the center, they're revitalized, but what happens when they leave is the most crucial time in their recovery effort, finding a place to stay, finding stable employment, doing their proper follow-ups at whatever level that they leave the center at. And while we were struggling to figure out the solution to that, this grant came along which will allow us to further enhance what those outcomes may be and to quantify the data that's associated with that in order to make some better decisions following through. So I commend you and your team for, for the effort that you all put into this.
And I, I failed to mention, I'm glad you said that about the data because we, we also, part of this grant is we hired you and, we'll hire you and CW, and they'll be doing an evaluation of how effective we are in making sure that those things, those, those things happen. So we're real excited about that. And, and I'll also mention, as part of the, part of the SOAR program, we have a mental health grant which will help us. And part of that mental health grant is providing counseling services inside the jail. So in addition to this grant, another grant that we, that we worked on with the county, we're in the process of implementing, will provide services for folks who are in jail and addicted to opioids. And hopefully, we can dovetail them into this program where we're following those folks long-term to make sure that they're getting the treatment they need.
Is, are there any opportunities for diversion from incarceration?
Well, part of what we'll be doing is we will be divert, diverting some folks.
From low level, low level.
Low-level folks. And I think with the grant, because there is no mental health services in the, in the jail now, I think having those counselors in the jail and being able to coordinate with the folks that are, that the peer navigators we have at the, at the Dicks Crisis Center, I think that's gonna help us follow those folks at least when they get out of jail. And I think that's gonna be effective as well.
You know, one of the things, I applaud your efforts as well because we have discussed trying to establish a strong re-entry program here in the area. And I've started moving ahead with getting groups of people together, try to work towards that. Lily Grant, Tracy Jackson's been integral parts of trying to establish those organizations that could work with this type of program. One of the biggest things about re-entry, if we could start with prevention, then we don't have to worry about re-entry. You know, so for your efforts, because a lot of times when you have people have issues with addictions, eventually crime is a problem. So therefore, we could get ahead of this, then we could do a lot of prevention. So like, again, I applaud what you do and what you've been doing.
And we're, we're excited about the fact that we have UNCW and their, their criminal justice department will be looking at outcomes and trying to, trying to determine, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to be as effective as we can. So it's, it's actually very exciting that, that we were able to get this grant. In fact, in the United States, we receive the most, the most funding for the program. So it's, it is pretty exciting.
Any other questions or comments to Chief Yanero? Thank you, Chief. Counselor, you being asked to execute, allow them to execute required award documents and approve the associated budget amendment for this BJA grant?
Mayor, I move that we approve the acceptance of the award for the grant and approve the associated budget amendment.
No motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next item on the agenda is for designated, designation of, of voting members at the National League of Cities Summit Annual Business Meeting. Right now, we have Dr. Angela Washington and Councilman Brian Jackson will be attending, registered to attend the NLC City Summit. Do I have a nominations, any nominations?
Mayor Phillips, I move that we elect Dr. Washington as the voting delegate and Councilmember Jackson as the alternate voting delegate.
Are there any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Okay. Next item is the Joint Land Use Study. And Dr. Woodruff is gonna be presenting this item. So tell us a little bit about that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have a resolution before you relative to the adoption of the Joint Land Use Study. As you'll recall, approximately two years ago, you had a joint session with the County Commission when the discussion occurred relative to a new joint land use study. That study has been conducted. Ray Greer of the consulting team of Stantec is here to answer any questions. However, due to the length of the meeting this evening, we will hold off on any further presentation unless you have specific questions. What we are asking this evening, though, is that you approve the resolution showing that you support the recommendations in the joint land use study and move forward, hoping that the County Commission will formally adopt it. Mr. Greer's here if you'd like to answer questions.
Ray, one quick question.
If you'll come up, please, and identify yourself for the record.
Tell me again, please, who all has adopted thus far?
Good evening. I'm Ray Greer with Stantec. I'm the project manager of the Joint Land Use Study. And the town of Swansboro adopted the resolution tonight. Holly Ridge and Richland's adopted two weeks ago. And then Onslow County is scheduled to adopt. They're gonna adopt after everybody else has in November.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on this, your company. Okay. So Counselor, you're being asked to approve, well, let me get to the right page here. I ended it there. To accept this joint resolution of support for the two thousand nineteen Joint Land Use Study.
I move second.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Okay, we have one added, yes, item.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. At the joint city and county meeting that we had, very productive meeting, it was mentioned that, that, that the city and county wanted to put a work group together to follow up some recreational items that were discussed at that meeting. And I would ask that if we can entertain making those appointments this evening.
Yes, sir. Do we have nominations?
I do. I nominate Bob Ward and Mayor Protem Michael Lazar.
Okay. Is there any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. All right. We got that taken care of. Okay. So now we're gonna go to our section of reports and we'll start with Mr. Jackson.
One thing I would like to report is that I think we could all do better as neighbors and hoping people avoid getting into situations before it becomes too late. There was a time where, you know, someone could just see that there are issues with someone else and we would step up to help them. I know there was, any time, we can do community cleanups, you know? I know I've been in ditches with the city manager cleaning them up, you know, and other things. So, you know, like I said, we just gotta do better with communicating with each other so we can avoid issues going forward and trying to figure out how we can help each other before we, we at our, our last steps. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lazar.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, congratulate our finance department. I think Dr. Woodruff couldn't have said it any better. And I'm glad you did. Having sat on, with the league, most people don't realize that it's just not status quo and that it's, you know, there's many cities in North Carolina that are on the state treasurer's watch list for, you know, various issues. And so it's just not a standard practice that the finances of a city are all in order and transparent. And we've had the, the honor of, of receiving those awards for many years. And I think what you talked about earlier is really important for citizens to know. And, and so I congratulate the team. They're always very transparent and they never, they never say no to any information that we ask of them through any budget process. And, you know, the citizen should be proud of that. So congratulations to, to our team. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Washington. Mr. Thomas?
I'm just glad Bob Ward's here. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Mayor, just the only thing I, I wanna say is, it's good to be back and I'm very proud to work with such a fine city staff and I'm equally proud to, to represent the citizens of Jacksonville. So thank you.
Dr. Woodruff.
Members of council, first of all, I'd like to remind the public that tomorrow morning at ten-thirty, we have the Beirut Memorial Observatory. Hope everybody will turn out. The weather is supposed to be pretty, pretty good. What we'd like to begin on the One City Moment this evening, as many people in the community knows, we are currently having about ten thousand of our Marines deployed to one of the largest military maneuvers that we've had in a number of years. They're going to Twenty-Nine Palms. Many of our Marines here at Camp Lejeune are actually in the process of getting there. And getting there means that they go however the military says they should go. When I think about going to Twenty-Nine Palms, I have to admit, I never think about going through Wichita, Kansas. But it turns out that this past week, and I think Glenn has some slides of this, that at the Wichita Airport, the plane landed. Unfortunately, when it was refueled, it turned out that the pilots had spent too many hours, so the Marines were left there, about a hundred of them. The restaurants had all closed and there was no food. And so when the Southwest crew came in to work the next morning, especially led by a lady named Haley Dawn Griffith, and realized that United States Marines had spent the night in their airport without any food, she and the other members of Southwest Airport, Southwest Airlines team immediately sprang into action and prepared over two hundred burritos, breakfast, donuts, even though they're not police, they still like donuts, Mayor, milk and orange juice. What's especially commendable is these troops were, these Marines were not on a Southwest flight. They were on the flight of another airlines. And yet, this crew, the ground crew of Southwest Airlines sprung into action and took care of our Marines. Now, if this isn't a reverse One City Moment, I don't know that I have ever seen one. So I commend them. I know the mayor is going to get in touch with the necessary personnel at, at Southwest to thank them for what they did for our Marines. But with that, I'd like for you to all to join me in a hurrah. Ready? One, two, three. Hurrah! No other reports, sir.
Here's Senator, have lost a man who loved his community. Marty Goldman, last Thursday morning, he passed away, leaving behind a legacy of community involvement, service to his country, and his family whom he loved dearly. This evening, we offer our sincere condolences to his wife, Brenda, his son, Brian, and his daughter, Amanda Diadeski, his son-in-law, John Diadeski, and grandchildren, Dresden and Penny. Many in this community came to know Marty while he served as Command Master Chief of the Naval Hospital. He reached out to the community while serving and they reached back to him. When he retired in nineteen ninety-two, he began service with Marine Federal Credit Union as a board member. Eventually, he became, he became the chairman of the board. He also served as chairman of the National Association of Credit Union Chairman in his capacity with Marine Federal. Marty also served the Chamber of Commerce as a vice president, helping to shepherd in a new air in a new building. He also served as a precinct worker. He was the chairman of the City of Jacksonville Board of Adjustment. He was a member of the Onslow Hospital Authority. He was also an original member of Sturg, of the Sturgeon City nonprofit when it became a freestanding nonprofit. His passion for Sturgeon City was driven by the impact he saw in providing educational and science-based learning in an environmental setting. He was proud that his son, Brian, fell in love with the environmental activities after he attended a session of the Sturgeon City Institutes. Brian also became the chairman of the Jacksonville Youth Council in school year two thousand six and eventually interned with the Water Quality Division. In a video made for Sturgeon City, Marty Goldman credited these programs for his passion for Sturgeon City. He helped to advance thousands of dollars to the programs and for the Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center.
Environmental Education Center. In June, he attended the donor reception and the opening ceremony the next day. He says he was extraordinarily proud of what had been accomplished, and that he could not wait to see what would happen next. This evening, we remember Marty Goldman for his gift to our community, of his time and talents. We remember him for his passion and his drive. And I remember him as a friend, a friend whose laughter was contagious. Anytime I was around Marty, I knew we were gonna have a good time, because he was just that kind of guy. Truly, the fabric of our community is weaker without his presence. Thank you.
Let's have a moment of silence for Marty, if he's still in there. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor?